Good evening. I will open this Board of Adjustment, Adjustment Meeting of September 21st, 2023, now at 6:30 PM. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Chair LeVere.
Present.
Vice Chair Wolvan.
Present.
Board Member Barrer.
Present.
Board Member Goodread.
Present.
Board Member Holland. Chair, we have quorum.
Great, thank you very much. Will everyone please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number three, approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda tonight from? Seeing none. The agenda is approved. Minutes to be approved. Everyone have a chance to review the minutes and I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to approve.
Just press once.
Because your mic's on, I think.
Okay. Mine's on.
I motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll second that motion.
We have a first and a second. We will open this for voting. And everyone can note now. Is it open? Okay, now it's open. And Goodread, Barrer, Wolvan, did you vote on your?
The plust, the head of the flag.
Yep. All right, and then we close. We see four in favor of approving the meeting minutes.
The vote is four in favor of the motion carries.
All right. Item number five, public comments. If you wish to address this Board under the public comment, please sign into the public speaker form at the front of the building there. We've got this now. Now, this public comment is a time to express opinions regarding issues that are not part of this evening's agenda. A separate opportunity to provide comment on this meeting's agenda tonight will be available later. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We expect comments to be civil, disrespectful, or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. This Board is not authorized, under the Colorado Open Meetings Law, to discuss, comment, or take action on this meeting at any issue raised by public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. We do have one person signed up, Dana Brandorf.
That's me. It is in relation to one of the agenda items.
Okay.
It wasn't clear that I, if I needed to.
Sure. Okay, from the gallery, we heard that Dana is here to speak on the item in the agenda tonight, so we will forego public comments on that. And there is none, none others signed up. Is there anyone else signed up or wishes to make public comments on anything that is not part of tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we will close public comments at 6:34. Item number six, general business, there is none. Item number seven is a public hearing. BOA Resolution 052023, BOA Resolution 052023, a variance request to the Cottage Court Maximum One Parking Space Per Unit Standard for a property at 2410 West Ridge Road, also known as Lot 1 of the Ridge Reserve Subdivision filing number one, First Amendment. Staff, would you like to present first?
Thank you, Chair LeVere. That's an excellent summary. A quick note before I begin my presentation, a very nice young woman found some keys in, in front of the building, and if anybody has lost their keys, please let me know, otherwise I'll turn them in up front. So, good evening. My name is Mike Sutherland. I'm the Deputy Director of Community Development for the City of Littleton. And tonight, we have a case which Chair LeVere expressed, summarized. The owner of the property at 2410 West Ridge Road is Ridge Views LLC, represented by Tom and Neil McHale. Ridge Views LLC purchased the property in March of 2022. The applicant is MA Architects, represented by John Matthews, and they are here to make a presentation this evening. The owner and applicant are requesting a variance to the parking standards for Cottage Court Communities, more specifically, Littleton City Code Section 10-1-3.7, vehicular mobility, includes Table 10-1-3.7.8.1, you gotta love the citations, which lists minimum and maximum off-street parking for Cottage Court Communities. The minimum listed is 0.75 parking spaces for each home, and the maximum listed is one parking space for each home. The owner and applicant are requesting a variance to allow two parking spaces for each home. To orient you to the property, it is located on the southwest corner of South Prince Street and West Ridge Road, on the very northern edge of Council District 4, and on the north side of Ridge Road is Council District 1. The property itself is approximately one acre in size. It is a gorgeous property and has spectacular views to the mountains to the west. It is in the medium lot residential zoning district. To the south is a single-family home built in the 1950s, single-story home built in the 1950s, and south of it is Prince Street Estates, a subdivision of two-story homes built in the mid-1990s. All of those properties are in the medium lot residential zoning district, too. To the north, across Ridge Road, is the stone subdivision in the Hilltop Manor cul-de-sac. There's also zoned medium lot residential with a mix of one- and two-story homes built over many decades. To the west is a group of properties all owned by the Littleton Cemetery Association. There is an office building on one of the properties, but otherwise, the properties are undeveloped and uninhabited, as far as we know. All of these properties are zoned medium lot residential. To the east, across Prince Street, is Ridgewood Village, zoned multifamily residential with a plan to overlay district. It is a group of one- and two-story townhomes built in the early 1970s. Proximity to the Ridgewood Village development and the multifamily residential development allows the owner and applicant for 2410 West Ridge Road to apply for a Cottage Court Community Development. Section 10-4-3.2A of the City Code states Cottage Court Communities are a type of housing that, here I quote, "broadens the diversity of living options available in the community to provide for accessible, adequate, and affordable housing," end quote. Under the provisions of the Cottage Court Community Regulations, the owner and applicant are proposing a six-lot subdivision. The normal maximum density for medium lot residential districts is five homes per acre. Through sustainability incentives and the Cottage Court Regulations, six homes may be allowed on this property. As noted previously, one of the stipulations of Cottage Court Communities is a maximum of one parking space for each home. The owner and applicant have told staff many times that they cannot sell $1.5 million houses with one-car garages. There's no markets for such a product. They're right as rain when they say this. But here's the rub. Council's stated intent for Cottage Court Communities is to provide affordable housing. Unstated in there is council's desire to find housing options for the missing middle, starter homes for regular folks. $1.5 million homes don't fit that bill. The city has no issue with the owner and applicant building $1.5 million homes on this property, but they need to follow the maximum density rules of the district and not shelter it under the guise of Cottage Court Communities. It all comes down to parking. The code says the maximum number of parking spaces for Cottage Court Communities is one space per dwelling unit. The owner and the applicant don't like this terrible rule, and they want two-car garages like everyone around them has. Being a terrible rule is not a hardship. The owner is welcome to build expensive houses with two-car garages on the property, just within the allowed density. They're welcome to build a Cottage Court Community, but there are strings attached, and one of those strings is, is the goal of affordable affordability. All the homes surrounding the property having two-car garages is not a physical surrounding that constitutes a hardship. Cottage Court Communities are meant to be different, and for a specific purpose, affordability. Staff included a primer on Cottage Court Communities as an attachment. The applicant has argued that this hardship is imposed by staff and staff's mistakes. Staff disagrees with the accuracy of this contention and provided a rebuttal attached into, in the attachments. Rather, staff believes that the need to build six $1.5 million homes is a self-imposed In this case, the minimum relief necessary is critical to the intent and concept of Cottage Court Communities. There may be a need for additional parking spaces, but staff believes they should provided, be provided as shared parking spaces. This variance request will confer us, will confer a special privilege to the property owner in terms of density. No other property owners in the medium lot residential district get to build at densities over five homes per acre. Finally, two-car garages do not affect public health, safety, or welfare. According to the code, the variance request must meet all six of the review criteria. Staff, in staff's opinion, it meets but one. Staff recommends denial of the requested variance. If the Board wants to approve the variance request to allow two parking spaces per house, staff recommends a condition to prohibit individual private parking, which staff believes is in keeping with the intent of Cottage Court Communities. The owner and applicant oppose this condition. If the Board wants to approve the variance as the owner and applicant want it, they should make sure to strike this condition from the proposed ordinance. Staff feels that council may be the, oh, let's see, excuse me, if the Board denies the proposed variance or approves the variance with a condition that is unacceptable to the applicant or owner, they may appeal the decision to City Council within 15 days, where a brand-new hearing will occur. Staff feels that council may be the proper arbiter of this particular variance request since parking is so closely tied with the intent of Cottage Court Communities. However, if the Board wishes to approve the request with no condition, the decision is final, and staff will abide by the decision to help the owner and applicant to complete the proposed development. Thank you. That concludes staff presentation.
Questions for staff?
I just had a question about the cottage homes, and you described it, and when I looked through it, it talked about the affordability and that they're medium land use. And the, the thing that struck me in looking through all the information in various places around the nation, they're usually like 1,400 square feet, where these houses are going to be 3,300 square feet. Is that right?
That is correct. The applicant can confirm that, but we, currently, we do not have maximum house sizes identified for Cottage Court Communities. That is one of the proposed changes to the, to the code that's coming to council in October.
Okay, so that doesn't. That doesn't govern these particular houses in this community? So they could be whatever size?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, if I can make a record really quickly?
Yep.
That was Board Member Holland asking that question, and I just want to make clear on the record, she did walk in as staff was starting this presentation, so she has now been present for the entire presentation since we had you as a no for roll call. I just want to make that clear. She's heard all of this so far. Thank you.
Thank you. For staff, I know this is, this issue that we're here today to hear on parking is the crux, the ask, if you will, for, for the evening. What, when I went through City Code and ordinances, the item number six, under that, that item that you referenced pertaining to garages, speaks only about shared parking spaces and detached garages. Is there, is it within building code to have an attached garage as part of the buildings that they propose constructing?
Yes, it is. And under the proposed regulations that we're bringing to council that are not in effect for this application, we would suggest that all parking for Cottage Court Communities be shared. However, that is not a part of this application. There is no restriction on providing attached garages. And if the, that, you know, the, if the variance were to be denied, they could have a single-car attached garage for each home.
Other questions?
This property that we're talking about tonight is, and to be a cottage community, is there a minimum number of houses that you could have on this lot and it would still be built under the cottage homes? I mean, could it be duplexes, two houses instead of six?
So the, there is no minimum number of homes for Cottage Court Communities. It does allow, and the applicant will, in the applicant's presentation, they'll talk about sort of the history of how we got from concept to here. The code has been changed since the applicant did their pre-application to their formal application. At one point, it was unclear what the density of Cottage Court Communities might be, and it might have allowed 12 units per acre. With the code change of 2022, that was reduced to five units per acre. And we are proposing changes in October to increase the density again in, in medium, medium lot residential districts. So there may be other opportunities in the future as well.
Any other questions at this time for staff? Seeing none. A call for the applicant to come make presentation? Hi, can you just introduce yourself and make sure when speaking, adjust the microphone so that we do have viewers at home watching on the street?
Good evening. My name is Tom McHale, and I'm here along with my son Neil McHale, our other son Connor McHale, who was part of our family development company, residential development company, was unable to, to be here tonight. First of all, I would like to thank the Board for, for being here. I understand that you guys are all volunteer here, and we certainly appreciate that. There's a system within Littleton to hear grievances, you know, where there are legitimate differences of opinions, and so I, regardless of the outcome, I want to sincerely thank you for your attendance tonight and at least hearing, hearing us out. So as I mentioned, we're, we're a family business. How we kind of got here, we're all from, we live in Littleton. I've lived in Littleton for, I guess, since 2008. Been in Colorado since 1984. Have three kids that were raised here, we're all, all of them still living in, in Littleton. We have previously built another property in Littleton about, down on Curtis Row, along with John Matthews, who was the architect. So we, we worked with Littleton before. One of the goals as a family for us is that there is a shortage of housing in the community in the US. As a professional outside of my family business, I financed the development of affordable and affordable housing, as well as for-profit housing apartments throughout the country on behalf of institutional investors. So I'm fairly well-versed both in how things are done nationally and, you know, some of the nuances within, within the, within the community. I think that John left out, I think, some important facts about this process. When, when we first came across this property, I don't live too far from here, and Neil found the property and said, hey, you know, we should, Dad, we should take a look at this, not far from the community. It was owned for 12 units. We, when we did our due diligence and we put it under contract, it was under Cottage Court. We met with John and other members of the city before we bought the property, and they assured us that we, you know, that it was Cottage Court and that we could build 12 units. So the whole concept of what he's asserting, that we want to build million-and-a-half-dollar homes, was Plan B. Plan A clearly was to build 12 more affordable, we thought we could build these in the 400, the $600,000 range. Frankly, I was looking to buy one, to downsize, you know, so, you know, I've been in the community, I've read it downside, lost my wife to cancer two years ago, and thought that, you know, want to stay in the community, my kids would be here, so this is what we wanted to do. They changed, the, as, as we've gone through this process, the city has evolved, as, as Mike mentioned, in terms of going back through zoning and trying to articulate this, and I think they would agree that we've been somewhat a guinea pigs here, you know, in terms of what they would allow and what they would, they would do. And Neil will go into detail in terms of how many times we have met with the city and how many times we've been misguided as to what the rules were and what we could do. So to be clear, you know, we wanted to build density and we wanted to build affordable house, more affordable housing. When they essentially changed the rules and said, you can do five, maybe six homes on here, we said, fine, but that's not our, that, that is not our original plan. The reason we were given at the time was that, for consideration of the neighbors, they didn't think that the neighborhood would be all that inclined to have the 12 units that we originally thought we were buying into. In an effort of collaboration, we said, that's not what we want, but, you know, we've already bought the land, you've changed the rules, we will, we'll try and accommodate. One of the things we did early on was we hired John Matthews as our architect. John, as most of you probably know, has worked tirelessly within the community, done a lot of projects within Littleton, a lot of quality projects in Littleton. Our family wanted to be associated with a quality project, similar to what we did on, on Curtis Row, and we knew that John had a long-standing relationship with the city. We were well aware of the turnover that there's been in the city, in the building department, and I, you know, we're not going to go into a lot of detail about the number of different people we have met with who have changed and are no longer with the city, but that was frankly, I think, part of the issue here in terms of the amount of changes that have imposed on us in the information that we got after the fact. So, you know, with that, I think I'm going to turn this over to Neil, to Neil to give a little bit of the chronology and a little bit more of the detail in terms of, you're going to kind of correct, I think, some, some misconceptions here that have been put forward.
Can you hear me? Thank you for being here. My name's Neil McHale. As Tom mentioned, we have a family business. My brother could not be here. I grew up in Littleton, right by Heritage High School, lived here my whole life. My wife and I now have a child and are planning on raising our kids here. So we love Littleton, and I've known about this piece of land since I was a kid, driving, driving by Prince Road, and when we originally bought it, we thought it'd be a great opportunity to provide some affordable housing. So our variance request, again, is pretty simple. We're asking for a two-car garage on our development instead of the one-car garage for the Cottage Court Communities. Our development does meet every other requirement for Cottage Court Communities, and we feel that this development- that this development would fit in well with all the surrounding neighborhoods and be an asset to the community. You can see on the site plan here, we've got six homes right on the corner of Ridge Road and South Prince Street. It's a nice enclave of homes. We've got plenty of green open space, as well as on the corner, you can kind of see on the corner of Ridge Road, where it indents there, we've got a community gathering space where all the neighbors in that subdivision can gather. Also, that little strip, it's not little, but that strip of land next to the, that indents next to the theoretical roundabout, the city did, and I'll go into detail when they did decide to take a significant amount of land from us for a roundabout that they state in their staff report is theoretical and is not in the foreseeable future of being built. That, taking that land did make, have significant impacts and was a hardship on us designing to the Cottage Court community standards. So a little bit about the site history. We purchased the site in March of 2022. We had met with the city prior during due diligence, and there was entitlements in place to build 12 affordable for-sale townhomes under the Cottage Court zoning. Those townhomes, as Tom mentioned, were going to be selling for between 400 and 600,000. So that would have been much more affordable for the average Littleton resident. Since then, we've had nine in-person meetings with the Littleton Planning Department, starting in April of 2022. We've worked with the Planning Department in good faith during multiple site changes they enforced over the course of a year while they tried to figure out their Cottage Court zoning. In March of 2023, this was the first time that the Planning Department had had any opposition to the two-car garages that we had clearly shown throughout the process. Here's some of the chronology here. In April of 2022, we had our first pre-app meeting with the city. Our townhome concept was turned down. The city encouraged us at that point to proceed with a 12-home Cottage Court community. In May of 2022, we had met with Mike Sutherland and Zareen. We discussed the Cottage Court zoning and proceeded to develop a 12-home site plan. There was no mentions of Cottage Court density limits at that time or a one-car garage requirement. In July of 2022, we had our second pre-app meeting. The 12 lots they previously encouraged us to build was arbitrarily rejected due to the new density limits the city adopted in the MLR for Cottage Court communities. The direction at that point from the city, from Mike and Scout, was to proceed with a six-lot home option. So now, we went from originally when we bought the site, 12 units, down to six. So after that, we immediately started developing our site, our third site plan. We went from 12 units to six homes. In August of 2022, we met with the South Metro Fire Department Public Works. And in September of 2022, we had our third pre-app meeting where we introduced our six single-family lot development that included a two-car garage. We reviewed the comments from the city of Littleton. There was no comment about a one-car garage requirement. We were told by them to proceed with the site development plan. In September, later in September, about a week later, we hired our civil engineer and landscape architect. They had meetings with the Public Works Department to review detention and right-of-way dedications. In October of '22, we had follow-up meetings with the Public Works Department and Scout, who I believe is no longer with the city. So there has been quite a bit of turnover with who we've been dealing with. We were now informed in October of 2022 that we had to give up 2,321 square feet of our lot for a theoretical roundabout on the corner of Ridge Road and Prince Street. Page 40 of their staff report states that there are no plans to build this in the foreseeable future. This was a significant hardship to our development. It's the 2,321 square feet is basically your average-sized home lot in Littleton. So it's a significant portion of our property. In November of 2022, we had our neighborhood meeting. Scout did attend that. We had our site development plans up for the neighborhood to review. We reviewed our six-lot development that included two-car garages. The neighborhood supported more upscale single-family versus multifamily. The neighbors were much more concerned about the theoretical roundabout and its impacts than they were our development. Later in November, we followed up with Mike and Scout to review the project approvals. We reviewed all of the development requirements with them. About a few days later, on the 29th of November 2022, we had additional review with Littleton and proceeded with our SDP submittal. In December, we submitted that to the city of Littleton. And then in January 2023, we had more correspondence with Mike and Scout regarding SDP requirements. The preliminary plat was finalized and submitted. During February, from January to February, the SDP was in review with the city. And during that time, there's a requirement that we needed a second neighborhood meeting. So we scheduled that for April 12th of 2023. Then we received the comments from the city of Littleton on March 23rd of 2023, and this was the first indication that a two-car garage was not acceptable. This is now a year later, after multiple meetings, multiple different site plans, land taken, and this, we've been dealing with this for a year and trying to work in good faith with them to develop this project. And this was the first time that they notified us of that. These are a couple examples that in the staff report, the city gave of Cottage Court communities. This one was in Brockton Dale, New York. It's a 40-acre site with 140 units. Our site is under two acres. And the project was also developed in 1996. So these project costs that they use as examples of a Cottage Court are not relevant to today's development world. Inflation, construction costs, land costs, everything has gone up significantly. Another example that they cited of Cottage Court communities was in Redmond, Washington. This was a nine-and-a-half-acre site and constructed between 2003 and 2005. The last sale of that was in 2008. When you look more at these examples for Cottage Court community, these are much more suburban areas and very large pieces of land. We have a smaller infill land site that's under two acres. So this is a map of the surrounding area. Right in the middle with the flag is our development site. Right above it is a development, all two-car garages. The development to the right of us, across Prince Street, is multifamily townhomes with two-car garages. And just to the south of us is larger homes with two-car garages. We feel that our development would fit in with this community. A Cottage Court community that the city is trying to develop the code doesn't seem to work on a smaller land site like this. So in closing, I just want to emphasize again that we purchased this intending to build 12 more affordable lots. After all these meetings and code changes during the process with the city, we now got down to six lots. We do meet all of the Cottage Court community standards besides the two-car garage. Even with the portion of land that was taken from us, we were able to develop enough green space, open space, and a community gathering center in the development. So thank you. And now I'll turn it over to John Matthews, our architect.
Thank you for coming tonight. My name is John Matthews with MA Architects. I have been working in and around downtown Littleton for more than 20 years, completed a lot of very successful historic renovation projects, commercial projects, housing projects, and most recently, the new Cherry Cricket on Littleton Boulevard. So I also am a board member of the Littleton Downtown Development Authority, very active in the future of Littleton, very concerned about the community. And I've lived here, really, my entire adult life. All my children have been raised here, and we're active members of the community. First of all, I would like to just, I'm going to keep my, my presentation pretty brief. But I think it's very important to point out some facts. I have been working on planning and architectural projects for 30-plus years, and I can't say that I've ever been to a Board of Adjustment to request a two-car garage. I mean, it's just, to be honest with you, I can't even believe I'm here saying that tonight. Especially when you look at the context of this site, what's around it. This is clearly a transitional site. You know, we have townhomes, older townhomes of higher density directly across the street. We have single-family to the north, single-family to the south. This is an ideal site for a higher-density-type solution, which, by the way, these types of projects are being built all over Columbine Valley. If you've driven Bowles Road and Platte Canyon and near Columbine Country Club, there's a lot of these new, very high-quality, custom, single-family homes. They have very nice yards. We have a nice common area. We have a nice sense of entry. You know, this site presents a number of challenges. It's on a very busy intersection. The city is stating that they're going to build a roundabout someday. Who knows if that'll ever get done? I mean, there's a lot of other priorities right now in Littleton, as everybody is aware. But I just want to point out that this design, the design features of this site plan are very unique. And, and we actually conform to all of the design guidelines for the Cottage Court development criteria with the, in the MLR zone district, with the exception of a two-car garage. You know, if you, I can go through those briefly. You know, the Cottage Court allows a minimum 1,000-square-foot lot size. Our average lot sizes are well over 5,600 square feet. Minimum lot widths for Cottage Court is 25 feet. We're 60-plus feet in width on these lots. Maximum heights are 30 feet. We're going to meet the maximum heights. So these houses will be very appropriately scaled and fit in well with the neighborhood. We've met all the setbacks. We've met the building coverage maximums. And just to clear up what Mike Sutherland was talking about density, we, this is an allow, this is used by right, okay? We have five units per acre, which we were allowed to be increased to six by incorporating sustainable design incentives. All of these homes are going to have sustainable design features. And these are going to be a significant improvement to the area. I don't know how else to say it. We meet the common open space. And the truth of the matter is, we've revised the site plan at least five times, this six-lot site plan, okay, quite a bit since the neighborhood meeting. And we worked with city staff to continually improve the site plan design to meet the Cottage Court guidelines. And to be honest with you, I was shocked when they came back and said, you know, one car maximum. I've worked with city staff for years, as Michael knows. Me and Michael have worked together on a lot of great projects. And unfortunately, this project was mishandled by city staff. I'm going to go on record as saying that. And it's all been documented, okay? You know, the city, let me just give you a little bit of current facts about the current Cottage Court standards in Littleton's ULUC, okay? Staff has acknowledged that, that it's inadequate. It's not thorough. In fact, we have emails from city staff in July of 2022 after our second pre-app that they were going to be making changes to the Cottage Court standards because, because there were inherent flaws within the code. And so what we have here is, we've got a project that's kind of caught in the middle a little bit. You know, we started this process. The city didn't fully understand what Cottage Court meant. They started reviewing designs, and, and they just really did not communicate clearly what the intent was, and certainly never communicated clearly in our mind, that we could only have a one-car garage. Because that was never conveyed in any of the previous pre-application meetings, in any of the neighborhood meeting, you know, that's all on record. We clearly talked about two-car garages. So the Littleton ULUC has adopted in October 2021, established Cottage Court communities as allowed in MLR zone districts, which is what we're in. The ULUC did not contain lot and building standards for Cottage Court communities in this own district, hence the need to modify the code. There have been oversights, gaps, and items that need to be corrected in the ULC. This, this, this was acknowledged by staff. Littleton staff, planning and council is currently reviewing updates to the ULUC to address issues and establish new design criteria for the Cottage Court communities. Increased density and parking standards are included in the proposed update. And just, just to kind of give you an example of some of the confusion, if you look under Article, as Mike cited, you know, cited earlier, 10-4-3.2A Cottage Court Community under F Standards, okay, as Cottage Court community, a Cottage Court community shall be subject to the following. And if you go down to number six, under garages, C, it says, a garage shall not exceed four car bays. So you can see why, there's a lot of confusing data in the code. And first of all, I just want to talk about the site context, as we have already talked about. I think at the neighborhood meeting, the neighbors, you know, while they're not always comfortable with new development, they like the idea of single-family homes on this site much more than a multifamily project. And this is what this developer is committed to building. And these are going to be very high-quality. The project fits in well to the neighborhood. It is a good transitional use of this site. And everything around it has two or more car garages. And the fact that we're even talking about two-car garages is hard to believe. But anyway, that's, I just wanted to point out a few things. And thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll, we'll give you time to close, and then we'll check for discussion, or not discussion, but questions for the applicant.
That's fine. Again, thank you. So, you know, I, I think, you know, the message here is that frankly, we've been consistently misguided, whether, and I don't believe there's malice there. I just think that there was a lot of confusion. We were guinea pigs. I think the city, the planning department acknowledged that we were, you know, our timing was unfortuitous, that we were guinea pigs. But we have tried to be accommodating. We have tried to do whatever we can. But a lot of the decisions that the planning commission made have been completely arbitrary, you know. And, and the, the two-car, you know, going, saying Cottage Court, how, why the planning department can dictate who has how many cars in a home is a little bit beyond what I think is a normal planning department. I don't think anyone here on the board would be buying a home in Littleton that had a one-car garage, or anybody within their family. You know, I think, secondly, you know, when we, we, they've already taken 2,500 square feet from us with no compensation, right? For something that they've admitted, they don't even know that they're going to use. I just think there's a question of fairness here, you know. And again, we have tried, we have tried to accommodate them. We tried to do this as a collaborative effort. But I think a lot of these decisions frankly have, have, have been misguided and arbitrary. So, you know, as, as we said, this is a family business. To try and, I do take exception to try and portray us as trying to make some sort of extraordinary profits off of this. As I said, our intent in the city told us we could build 12 units on here. I don't think we're getting a million and a half. I think that's a nice number that Mike's come up with. We're doing the best we can. You know, it's a family business. Had, had, had any of us ever been brought up before, when we had the original meeting with the team, that there was this risk, we never would have bought the site. That was the purpose of the meeting. We never would have bought the site. So I hope you guys appreciate your efforts, and I trust that you guys are going to be fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant from board members? And, yep.
Okay. This might sound really simple, but I can't
But I can't tell from the picture, is there any street parking near these houses that are being developed? I'm trying to think. I'm like, I know I drive down Ridge Road, and there's not much, I don't think, but I don't know.
On-street parking?
Can I answer that?
Yep.
Uh, I believe Prince Street does not have on-street parking, but there may be opportunities on Ridge Road.
Yeah, I think that's, I think.
Ridge Road doesn't have on-street parking.
But Prince down along, I mean, if you look at the site, it's just, it's, 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 it's empty.
West of the site.
Go the west of the site. There's plenty.
Dead end, right?
Right. And, and I don't think parking is restricted on Ridge Road, but it is on Prince.
That makes sense.
All right. And then this, one might be a little bit more complex. So with the changes to the size of the property for the, whatever you call that, turnaround, um, could you, it sounds like the city code is going to change again in November. Do you have any sense that your original plan would then be able to be allowed in November?
No, and I have no confidence that, you know, frankly, based on what we've done, that that's just not another interim step. And then we're going to continue to be guinea pigs. And there's time and effort, you know, in terms of, uh, you know, as a, as a family business to, for Neil, uh, pay his bills, he's got a wife and kid, delaying this another year, uh, is, 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 I think unreasonable, while, while the city tries and figures this out.
And given your experience with the city planning department this last time, would you develop in Littleton again?
I don't, I don't think so. I really don't. I mean, I, I, I will say, this is a common phenomenon, I mean, in my, my business, where there are, um, a lot of turnover at the local municipalities, COVID's impacted things. But, uh, this happens to be a little more discombobulated than our experience. There's, there's been a lot more turnover. I think you guys are aware of the, the amount of turnover that they've had. And no, I don't think we would, we would look at that again.
I'd like a chance to rebut some of those statements, uh, at the appropriate time, whenever that might be.
Other questions for the applicant? Give me just one second. Yeah, I don't think I have any additional questions for the applicant. I, I may come back to staff on, on some references, but, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me go through my cheat sheet real quick, and then, Steph, I think now would be a good time, uh, while, to rebut, as you mentioned.
If we could, uh, show the screen at the podium, I would appreciate that. I did bring up a, a PDF. We'll get there. Thank you. Is there a way to enlarge that?
Well, this is the chronology.
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Sorry about my inability to get that up right away. Um, just noting, uh, a few of the applicant's, um, uh, contentions. They said that I made up the number of one-point-five million. That's in their application for this, um, this variance. That's, uh, they have stated that in their applications. They want to build one-point-five million dollar homes. I did not make up that number. Um, and to, um, clarify some of the timeline, the, I was involved in, in quite a, quite a few of the meetings that happened for this, this project. Uh, there was some indic-, or some implication that two-car garages were shown at any of the pre-apps that happened on, that's factually incorrect. No two, no garages at all were shown in these, um, in these pre-application meetings, or we would have had an opportunity to talk about that. Um, it was just lots that were shown. Uh, there's some implication that we should have given the comment at the neighborhood meeting that, uh, two-car garages were not allowed. That's not an appropriate time for staff to make, uh, a review of a case. Uh, they, they did show the, the two-car garages at the neighborhood meeting. But that, we can't, uh, we can't do that on the fly.
Wait three months to do it after that?
So the application was turned in, uh, in, let's see. And you, you certainly will have a chance for rebut, my, my, my statement, but please allow me to finish. Uh, the application was turned in in, I believe it was, um, January, but was incomplete. It did not have the plat. And so we started the review. And at the first review, we, you know, that we received a complete application, and we made complete comments. And so I think that's an appropriate time to say that the, the two-car garages were not allowed, is during that review period on the first review. Uh, so I, I know that the applicant feels, um, slighted as a result of that process, but I do have to defend staff to some degree in this case, that I don't feel that the review timelines, given what we were shown, were inappropriate. Uh, we had not seen the, the one-car garages, or the two-car garages until the first review. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Last question for Steph.
Just a quick clarification. It said eleven-twenty-two. Um, it said eleven-twenty-two that it was presented with two-car garages, and that was at that neighborhood meeting?
Yes. That's correct.
That's correct, okay. And I.
Can I just say one thing?
No, not, not from there you can't. Um, if you, if you want to come up and, and make it quick at the podium, that's fine.
I was just going to say that after the neighborhood meeting, um, we did have, I believe, I don't know if, I don't, if the PDF can be pulled up, but we had one or two more in-person meetings with Mike and Scout after showing the two-car garages, which was also done before then. But we had one or two more in-person meetings before we did the SDP submittal. And our understanding with working with the city throughout the course of the full year was we were trying to be collaborative and work with each other. Given that the cottage court community, or cottage court community zoning was in flux, we were in constant communication with them, and would have thought that after the neighborhood meeting, before our SDP submittal, between November and March, that, that would have been discussed. We just thought we were in a more collaborative effort to, to do the project.
Thank you. For staff, uh, housing types under cottage court communities, um, permitted within the cottage court community include single-family detached dwellings, duplex and twin home dwellings, and multiplex. Very first on your timeline event is that townhomes are not permitted. How is a townhome different than multiplex or, um, duplex and twin home?
So a duplex or twin home, uh, you're probably familiar with, certainly single fam-, you know, a single house all by itself. A duplex would be side-by-side homes. Um, a multiplex could be a, a four-unit development that looks like a single-family home. Townhomes are like row houses, where you've got, and one of the, one of the, um, pre-applications showed a, a row house concept, which staff didn't believe fit into that, um, that list of allowed uses. But, uh, to answer your question, a multiplex would be, uh, um, I believe up to six-unit home that looks like a, that looks like a single, a large single-family home.
Yeah. Does, does townhome have, so townhome in, in your estimation is multiple attached, single-family homes? Where, where they, there's no one above and below, but there's side, side-to-side neighbors?
Correct. And that's allowed in different zoning districts.
Um, here they would have been limited to duplex or twin home, duplex being side-by-side, two units together as one home.
Correct.
And they could have maybe done multiple two-unit homes.
Correct.
And, and then when they've, when they, when they got turned down on, on their row concept of six, then they went to single-family rather than, than duplex.
Yes, that might be a better question for the applicant.
Okay. Um, going back to the parking, which, which is why we're here today, the garages. Uh, you stated earlier that garages are allowed to be attached per the building code. Do we have that, that reference, that, that citation? How, how that built, that's built into the, the code standards?
Let me make sure I understand that question.
Within the ULUC, when, when constructing these homes, th- these buildings within this zone, a cottage court community, can we point to where in that, where is specifically allows for the garages to be attached?
I don't believe there's a, um, you could point to a section of the code that says they're specifically allowed to be detached or detached. Um, but the, the building code would certainly allow for attached homes. I, I don't think they are prohibited, but, you know, attached garages are not prohibited by the code.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
To some extent, yeah. And, and I, going back to the, the section that the applicant pointed to earlier, item six on garages, six A, if provided, if provided, detached garages serving more than one dwelling unit shall be accessed via a private driver alley. Garage doors, presumably, as, as these go on, from A to B to C to D, given that we're starting with A, and we're talking about detached garages, B, C, and D are references to A.
That is correct.
And garage doors are prohibited from facing public streets right away unless screened on these detached garages. A garage shall not exceed four car bays for a shared detached garage. And garage buildings, obviously detached, shall be consistent in architecture, materials, and color to the principal dwellings.
Yes, uh, the code doesn't, uh, prohibit, uh, surface parking, but has regulations for, um, shared garages, or shared detached garages.
I've exhausted my line of questioning at this time. Uh, any other questions from?
So Mike, it sounds like there, am I correct that there's going to be a revision of this code coming up right now in terms of all the different aspects of cottage communities? How many can have, how high, how many, will you be addressing parking at that point?
Yes. And you are correct, uh, this is a proposed revision for this year's code changes.
For, for the density of parking requirement, can we point to that, uh, specific reference in the code as to what the, the, I believe you said it was between point-five-seven and one per unit?
Yes. That is table ten dash one dash three point seven point A one. That's within section ten dash one dash three point seven vehicular mobility. It's one of the tables included, I believe the first.
Okay, thank you. All right. Given no other questions for staff or the applicant, uh, we will move on at this time to public hearing. We will open up the public hearing at seven-thirty-two. This is, do I not have something to read? No. We have the sign-in sheets. Has everyone had a chance to sign in? Who would like to speak? Uh, we have two people signed in to speak. I will still accept, uh, Ms. Dana from earlier and Pam Chadbourne. It looks like we have two people signed up. We will start with Dana.
Hello, um, I am a resident, and I live south, closer to MacIntosh Academy. My concern is not, it sounds like you've been given the runaround, quite frankly. Um, and it's been kind of a moving target. My concern mostly is traffic on Prince. Um, and a roundabout that is proposed in the future, um, is probably not going to do much to help us. On, I live on Prince and Costia, and, um, traffic notoriously, they are using Prince as an alternate to Santa Fe. So my concern is with having a new development there, and the traffic constraints and issues. So it is not necessarily with having a two-car garage or a one-car garage. I think in this day and age, most people want a two-car garage, so I understand where the developer is coming from. Um, I think, I feel sorry for you, because I think you're going to constantly be heading down this direction of, um, it being a moving target, and you will not get confirmation, because the rules seem to be changing, um, for you. Um, but that is more of what I am concerned about, and if the neighborhood is not going to, or the city is not going to do anything with the roundabout, that they took land from this developer to develop, then we're still going to have a problem with that high-density traffic problem, that people are driving two miles straight down to Littleton to avoid driving on Santa Fe. Um, we need a stoplight at several locations on Prince. Um, I have seen, I've been in traffic there where people have blown through the four-way stop at fifty-five miles an hour. There are two schools right on that street, and Heritage High School, also, they come out onto Prince Street. Um, the drivers don't have an opportunity to get out onto Prince Street, because there's too much traffic coming. So my concern mostly is the traffic at that intersection and that area. So thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
All right, thank you. Second on our list tonight, Pam Chadbourne.
Uh, good evening, board. I'm Pam Chadbourne. I live a block and a half from here. Um, first off, I don't think the traffic on Prince is relevant. off, I don't think the traffic on Prince is relevant to this. I heard that neighbors were upset about it, but it's not the issue. The parking issue is difficult because I'm pretty sure that out of those six, I could definitely find some that are broken. But I want to bring up the one that oddly was found, oh, it will not adversely affect health, safety, and public welfare. My parents are in the cemetery next to this place. Many other people in Littleton have folks in that cemetery, and I do not want parking on Ridge Street next to the cemetery. That area should be respected. And I don't see that anywhere, but it harms me if this development counts on using that street for their parking. Their parking should be on their lot. It should not go onto the street that gives access to the cemetery. I would like you to consider that. That is a harm to the community quality and health, safety, and public welfare. That harms me and other people who have, people in that cemetery. When you say that the cemetery has fought for years about drainage on that lot and water running down there, people parking their cars back and forth for daily life, that doesn't belong around the cemetery. Now, I don't envy you the rest of this decision. It's very difficult and I see wrong on both sides. I'm sorry, but any experienced architect and folks who have worked around the nation on affordable housing knows what Cottage Court is. And it's one-story, pretty much attached, very low-cost units, and, you know, not, not as much parking because each unit is very small. So the occupancy is small, there's not a lot of cars. And to say, well, we're going by the code or whatever, there were, to me, games played on maybe both sides here. I am unhappy that this happened in Littleton, but the ULUC is a disaster in my opinion. Folks have heard this before from me, so it's not a surprise. So I'm going to point out Geneva Village, right there. 2.8 acres, 28 units, folks, one-story, beautiful landscaping, nature, and access and open space. I'd like these folks to consider that kind of design. Eugene Sternberg was an excellent architect to follow. So abandon this approach, get 20 units, like Eugene Sternberg did it, and this place will be better. It's an extraordinary community. Sternberg is a great example. Consider that. And really, I don't have time to talk about the rest, so good luck to you in this decision.
Thank you, Pam. There were no others signed up. Did anyone need a chance to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 7:38. I think we've got a tough bit to discuss here, and I think we should discuss with a, with an affirmative motion on the table, and then we can decide how to proceed from there. So I, I'll go ahead and get something on the record, and then we can open discussion. Let me get to my, my motion here. I move to approve the BOA resolution of 05-2023 approving the variance request for 2410 West Ridge Road concerning maximum parking standards.
A second, that motion?
A motion and a second. Let's discuss. Who would like to go first?
I would say that in an ideal world, I would love their previous plan. I think I like the idea, as Pam was saying too, of what a true courtside or court unit community looks like, like Geneva Village. But it sounds like that is not possible for them, given the circumstances of the change in the code. And now they're two years into a project financially, and so shifting back to that even with a code change now seems unfeasible for them. I also voted to approve because I do, I have, would have a hard time believing that six, potentially a total of six extra cars would affect traffic patterns. And that two-car garages, I, I have a two-car garage, and we don't park a single car in it because of all the kid stuff and the camping stuff and my husband's workshop stuff. So like, I think garages are very valuable parts of a property that are outside of also housing, like a car, and can be utilized for an e-bike, a kayak, or other recreational things. And if you do have a family in that home, there's never enough space to store kids' things.
Yeah, I, I think I'm a lot in agreement with you. I'm struggling very hard because I don't believe the Cottage Court Community is intended to have attached garages. I, I think that defeats the purpose. I think you look at Geneva Village, there's not attached garages in that. And I think it's, we're talking about a misuse of, of this design feature. However, given staff's opinion that attached garages are permitted, I don't think this off-street variance or the off-street requirements apply to what's within the building. I think the intent of the off-street is to provide sufficient space for the guests to ensure that the, and as our public comment Pam Chadbourne provided, that there needs to be parking available on the site for individuals visiting and coming in. I, I don't think this is the best place for Cottage Court Community. I, I think they're very, it, it's very narrowly only permitted because there is that multifamily kind of kitty corner from them across Prince. It's not exactly the right place for it, but that's not the issue here today. The issue here today is the, the parking variance. And I do think staff is not entirely reading the intent correctly. And, and so I feel like there's a bit of a quagmire here. And, and I haven't made up my mind yet, so I'd like to hear more discussion.
Can I jump in really quick, Chair, just kind of to focus it a little bit? I think this specific variance brings up a lot of issues that are, quite honestly, outside of BOA's duties and roles, right? A lot of things are brought up about policy, about code changes, about what the code may be, or what the intent of the code was. And those are things you can consider, but ultimately in reaching your decision today is really following the six criteria that you have to base this on, and whether you're finding it or not. What I will say, though, is given a lot of what was presented today as far as the strict application of the code and how it has changed over time with this application is something you can consider. And whether that stripped, strict application of the code imposes an undue hardship is under subsection A. So that's the first criteria you're considering. So a lot of what was presented on that probably goes to that criteria. So I just want to make sure it's a little bit more focused because a lot of commentary is kind of larger than what you're asked to do today. If you can kind of, in your discussions, really try and stick to the criteria, noting a lot of what you heard today that's beyond that can inform your decisions on that, if that's helpful.
Yeah, so my thoughts on it are that I'm not, I'm very sympathetic to the applicant, and I know this has been a long process, but when I do look at the six criteria, I cannot disagree with staff's recommendation on any of them.
I, I mean, I think it's how, it's how you define it, like the, as she was saying, strict application of the code causes undue hardship. The code was changed after purchase of land and the initial, like, plan was put forward. So that could be considered undue hardship because it wasn't any fault of the applicant's, but a change in like how the city saw that land could be used. I think you can also say that the hardship, they have faced hardship on physical surroundings based on the changes to their lot after purchase that the city, you know, took to develop the roundabout. And you can also say that the hardship is not necessarily self-imposed, again, because they were part of a change that happened midway through their process. So I think these can also be led up to a lot of interpretation of things differently, right? And that's the hard part. Oh, and I'm sorry, on the privilege piece, they also pointed out that everyone else around in the surrounding neighborhood or like right next to it all have double garages. So that doesn't seem like they're getting special privilege if all the other units around the area have double garages.
Well, I, this is a really, this is probably the hardest case I've been faced with since being on this board, but, and I am very sympathetic to the developers because I think they have been, as they said, guinea pigs. But I think in terms of the cottage design, the one-car garage and the, the smaller community type is what these are supposed to be. And it should be, if they aren't bigger houses, they're not the two-car garage. It's supposed to be more of a community. And I realize that it's changed along the way, but it wasn't at the beginning set up that way. And now that the application has gone in, this is what the standards are, and it doesn't meet those criteria. And the, that neighborhood, the neighborhoods around it, they do have two-car garages, but they're very different neighborhoods. Some on the north side are built in the 50s, some are built in the 70s. On that north side of Ridge, those are all sorts of different types of houses, probably built in, some built in the 40s even. So I don't know that that gives them any special privilege. This is a whole different set, different type of development, this community cottage type of development. So I think that's where the consideration comes in for the one-car garage.
Yeah, one, one thing that struck me there is to use the Cottage Court Community building structure allows them to have greater density. And now that they have greater density, they want to have a different standard in the parking as interpreted by staff. Conversely, they can still build by right as it is and build with the one-car garage. And you may have residents, these may sell very quickly still because we're in that type of housing environment. And residents will have lots of extra cars to park on Ridge Road and in other places when they could easily be parked within the home as designed and proposed here today. Not saying that that's something we need to consider, however, it, it still sits with me.
Well, I think it is something to consider because the impact to the community, as you said, if they, and as Pam, as our Pam said earlier, the impact to where people park if they can't park their car next to their home or in their garage by their home, they are going to park on the street, right? Because people often have two cars. We are in a car society. And so people are going to park on the street, and where that is potentially does have more impact on their neighbors than having an extra garage. I think the other thing is that this would be more true of a cottage community if it had been 12 units, and it would look more like something like Geneva Village. But these were now gone from 12 to six, which automatically makes it not feel as cottage community-esque compared to the other examples shown. And the square footage on them are twice the size of my single-family home that I live in. So they're quite big homes. So to have a, you know, quite big home with a one-car garage that could house families, that seems, yeah, it seems disproportionate to the other houses in the area.
But are they cottage homes or not? I mean, that's...
Right, but you can be, you can have, so from what city said, you can have a cottage home that's 5,000 square feet. I'm just saying, who's going to, it's going to be hard to fill and have someone who wants to live in a, a single person's probably not going to have a, one of these cottage homes. It's going to be a family, which means it's going to be people, two adults that need to leave and go to work and take kids around. And so that extra garage is vital when you have a bigger home. That's going to have more likely to have a family in it than a single person. If it was Geneva Village, I don't know how big those are, but like, those definitely seem to be smaller square-footage homes that is more intended for a single person or a couple or a couple as opposed to a family.
So as I look over the list of the criteria to make this decision, it's not my job to decide whether or not I agree with whether, how many garages could be on this property. The way I read this is we're supposed to just go through these six points and say, do these apply to this? If there's changes to be made to a definition of a cottage community, that's going to be done at the city or city council level or something else, and then we still have to go back to this list. And so the way I look at it is that number one, for the strict application of the code, and does, do other people have this right? Well, there aren't any other cottage communities in that area to compare to. So this is the first. So I think it's, who cares how many garages the other houses around there have? It's not the same type of community. So to me, that doesn't apply. Number two, the hardship based on the result of the physical surroundings, space obviously is not the problem because there is space to do two-car garages. We saw it on, on the drawings, and the architect can do that. So the space is not a problem. The code is. The hardship under which the variance is sought is, was not created by the owner. Actually, it is between the owner and the code. And how they address that code is not something I feel is, is part of my decision here, so that doesn't apply. Number four, the variance requested is the minimum necessary. I think that we're talking about what they want versus what is needed. We have to go by what the code says. So it's a want, not a need. So I don't think that one applies. Number five, a variance will not confer on the applicant any special privilege. I think it will definitely set precedence, that if this is allowed on this one, then that is going to be what will be implemented. Anybody building a cottage community can then ask that, why not? Because we've just changed the guidelines. So I don't feel that that's in our right to do that for our board. And then I don't think it affects public health or safety. So that's how I view implementing these six criteria to this question tonight.
Yeah, well, well said. I think I agree with each one of those points. I, I might state them in very similar fashion. The, the hardship is created in desiring to use the Cottage Court standards. The topography, the, the physical surroundings aren't limiting their ability to build one's, one-car space per dwelling. They're, they're asking to do more than that, so the topography is not affecting their development. The variance requested for the minimum necessary, that the land can still be used. It's not something that can't be, it just won't maximize their ability to market and sell. And again, going back to, this would confer a special privilege. Definitely, anyone that wants to build a Cottage Court Community in the future would see this as precedent. No one else has built them with these multiple parking spaces, so I agree there as well. So we do have multiple, in my opinion. And, and I don't think all six have been met, even if we disagree on one or two of them. But for the record, if there are opinions on each one of these six criteria that someone wants to make, further discussion, now is the time. Are we ready to vote?
And as a reminder, the motion that is currently out there is to approve, but it's with the condition that staff added in. Again, noting the applicant is not agreeing with that condition, but that is as it's written. So if you're moving to approve, it's an approval saying you're finding the criteria and you want that added condition. want that added condition.
Right, so the, the motion on the board there is to approve with making, i-if it's two spaces, they will be common spaces, not attached. Is it, is, how you just say that?
Yep, the way it's read, you've already got the motion out there. I just want to make clear, you did the motion correctly, it's to adopt this resolution as written. I just wanted to remind you that it would be approving the two spots, but with this condition. So if you aren't wanting the condition and wanting to approve, you can do an amendment to remove it or if this is how you want it, I just wanted you to remind, to remember that that was in there. So you're all on the same page what you're voting for.
If there's no amendments to the motion, we will move to a vote. Please vote now. Oh, you know what? Now let's try it.
The vote is one in favor with Goodread, Wolvan, Laverre and Holland voting against. The motion fails.
I do apologize. You are, your variance has been denied and I'm sorry for the struggle that you've had with the city at this time. I do wish you luck in getting this resolved. That brings us to close. I have number six on our agenda, I am, or seven on our agenda. I have number eight, comments, reports for the Development Director.
Just wish to note that the, we will send written notice to the applicant and the property owner of this, the decision tonight within 10 days. They do have the opportunity to appeal this decision to City Council within 15 days. So wanted to make sure that that was clear. Otherwise, no reports from, from city staff.
Okay.
Quick question, what, if they do appeal it to City Council, can City Council overturn what we've done? If they can.
So it would be a brand-new hearing at City Council. They would, this would be part of the record, but they could, City Council would consider the case on its own merits with the review criteria that you, that you reviewed as well.
Thank you.
Okay, city staff, clerk, legal, attorney, anything to report?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Meeting next month? No? Nothing yet?
Not yet.
All right, thank you all. We are adjourned at seven fifty-nine.